All right. With that, we will begin our meeting. Due to the COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission will conduct its essential business by electronic means rather than being required to gather a quorum of members physically present in the same location because it is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with Governor's, the Governor's Executive Order Number 60, which remains in effect until 11:59 PM on October 28th, 2020. With that, I will call us to order, and I will also read the statement that says it has been determined that this meeting electronically is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus. The recording of this meeting will be made available to the public online. With that, I will determine a quorum. I will say your name and let me know if you are here. Alderman Blackwell?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Mr. Comer?
Here.
Mr. Schwerer?
Sorry, I had a light. I'm here.
All right. Mr. Crabtree?
Here.
And Mayor Nois?
Yeah.
All right. With that, I determine we have a quorum. Everybody is present. With that now, if we would, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. If everybody would stand, and I'll start us off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United-
Of the United States of America.
-Republic of which is standing.
Nation.
Indivisible, indivisible liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everybody. If we would review the minutes of our previous meeting, and then once y'all are adequate, that they are correct, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, that was Mr. Crabtree with the motion, and Alderman Blackwell with the second. Okay, we have to go through this, since this is a virtual, I will say your name, and we will do it. All right, Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
All right. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And mine is yes, so that is unanimous. All right. Any reports from officers or staff? Ms. Moody?
No report.
All right. With that, we have no old business, got a lot of new business today. So first on the agenda is the zoning amendment, and this is a public hearing. This is a zoning map amendment 239, a request to rezone two parcels on 112 South Collin Street from low-density residential R1 to general commercial district C2. Applicant is Mr. Willard Mills. Before we get into opening up for public hearing, any staff notes, Ms. Moody?
I would just share, this property is located immediately off of West Lincoln Street, behind the Citizens Tri-County Bank there. Several people have commented to me that they remember it as maybe most recently Blue Bears, or a laundromat in the past, maybe a family diner in the past. So, and it presents itself as a commercial building. Most of the lot is a parking area with a small structure on it, and then the other property is immediately behind it, a landlocked parcel that's vacant, just grass, property. I immediately noticed that the zoning was inconsistent. I don't know how long it's been inconsistent, but had suggested to Mr. Mills that it was in the best interest as the property owner, and knowing that his intent is to want to continue to use it as a commercial building, to seek the rezoning, and so that we could make, consider making it consistent with the building that's there and the parking that's there.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. This is a public hearing. You are given two minutes to speak. State your name and your address. If you're going to yield your two minutes to any individual, I'm going to ask that in the front, so we can get that all put down, so we don't have a lot of back and forth, especially over this media. So with that, do I have anybody that is going to donate their time for this public hearing? All right. So I'm opening the public hearing. Would anybody like to speak on this? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing on this zoning map amendment, and entertain a motion.
Zoning to C2.
Second.
All right. I think that was Mayor Nois moved to approve, and that was Mr. Comer that seconded. All right, the floor is open. Any discussion within the board? Go ahead.
Chairman, if I could share with the board, I did have a couple of conversations with property owners. When I sent the notice out to all of the owners within 100 feet of the property, I had a few phone calls. One was a resident that faces Wheeler Street, who did not wish to speak or have any concerns, but more was, wanted to understand the letter and what the purpose of the notice. And then I had another business owner that fronts West Lincoln Street, I think that did not, obviously did not want to speak tonight at the public hearing, but just shared that he didn't have a lot of concern as long as there wasn't parking from this property or whatever use occurs here, if it wasn't overflowing and creating a nuisance or disturbing the other property owners. So I just thought I would share that information. There was a woman I spoke with that I thought intended to join us on the meeting tonight, and I'm trying to find her email to me now.
Jennifer, my daughter dropped my stack of papers, and they're all mixed up right now. Did you say that this lot is, it's, you said like landlocked, like it's surrounded by other parcels?
One of the parcels is, one parcel fronts South Collin Street-
Okay.
-and the parcel immediately behind it is a landlocked parcel, surrounded by the parcels that front Lincoln, the parcels that front Collins.
So same owner?
Same owner.
Okay, so I guess I just, that was my, I didn't know that you could have a lot. I was wondering how you access that lot, because I didn't know you could have a parcel that you couldn't access. I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I don't know the history of how it was subdivided. It is under one owner, and I would imagine that its value is maybe as potential parking for this property in the future.
They could have acquired this by two different deeds, but obviously, it's probably on the tax map for two different parcels, but it's really one contiguous parcel, so there's no problems about access when they own it all.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other comments? If not, I will move forward with the vote, as I state your name, if you will please. Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And my vote is yes as well. It is unanimous. All right. Jennifer, our next one says Denby Pond and Pasture Estates, but we have, did I miss some of that, or is-
No, that item was a major subdivision plat that was submitted and advertised, but is proposing septic system. And last week, I just became aware it has not yet been approved or signed off on by TDEC.
Okay.
And the rules that govern, that govern that Department of TDEC say that no regional planning commission shall approve a subdivision until their signature is on the plat.
Okay.
So then, we should, we should move to table this until the next month, until this can get cleared up?
And we actually will have three plats today that are in this similar circumstance, where the plat is still being reviewed by TDEC, has not been approved yet, and so we'll need to pull it from the agenda. Technically, not complete yet.
Do we even need to table it, or do we just pretend like it's not on the agenda?
I would say we just don't, it's not on the agenda. Is that proper etiquette, though? Roberts?
Sure, that'd be fine, yeah, because it's, there's nothing, there's nothing down here for any action at this time.
Okay. All right. If I say na, I will just skip over for everybody who has an agenda.
I have a question about this, Ms. Moody. TDOT has jurisdiction over roads and, and streets that aren't owned by the state of Tennessee. This is just on a county road out there.
Not TDOT.
How can they assert jurisdiction of-
I'm sorry, I probably was unclear. I was saying TDEC, the Tennessee Department of-
Tennessee Department of what?
They have rules that govern subsurface sewage disposal systems.
Oh, all right, the different-
Environment and conservation.
Okay, all right. I must have misunderstood you, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. So, next on our agenda would be public hearing for Harton Lakeway Place, Cedar Lane, minor subdivision plat. A plat to create three commercial lots from existing 2.5 acres at the corner of Lakeway Place and Cedar Lane. Our applicants are Harton Family Partners. So, once again, if anybody is donating their time, please let me know, and then if you are going to speak, you get two minutes, and state your name and address. All right, I'll open it up. Is anybody donating their time on this particular Harton Lakeway Place, Cedar Lane, minor subdivision plat? All right, anybody that'd like to speak? What was that?
Andy Best had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see that. Yes, sir?
Yes, Andy Best, Land Surveyor, who did the division on this property. This property is, my address is 273 Haynes Hall Road, Winchester, Tennessee. This property is located on Cedar Lane, right across from the old Sears Building. It's a vacant field right now, mostly fields, some woods. I was hired by Harton Family Partners to subdivide the property into three tracts for commercial development. We're seeking approval of this division tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Sorry, I didn't see you there.
That's all right.
Anybody else that would like to speak? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. It was Ms. Blackwell with the motion, and I think I heard Mr. Crabtree with the second. With that, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion amongst the board?
Jennifer, I didn't hear from you on this. Is this property, I'm assuming this property is already zoned commercial, right?
It is, C2.
I'm sorry, Ms. Moody, I didn't let you give your report. I apologize.
I think Mr. Best covered it. It's just, it's an existing two-and-a-half acre tract at the corner of, oh, at the corner of Lakeway Place and Cedar Lane, and being divided into three lots for commercial development.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion amongst the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ray Nois.
Yes, sir.
This is just for clarification. When you look at the staff report on background summary, if you read the background summary, it says that the two-and-a-half acre tract is at the corner of the New Rock Creek Road and Fairlane Drive. We might want to clean that language up.
Well, and I'll, let me pull the, maybe Andy can help me again. Andy, it looks like I've, I've put, that it's a two-and-a-half acre tract in one spot, and I said that it's, I don't know. You know, I have the location as corner of Cedar Lane and Lakeway Place, just above that. I think I just made an error in the paragraph.
It looks like it was a copy.
No problem at all, there's just, we're trying to clean up everything that we possibly can with our, in doing these approvals, so if that should come up, then that's just a tidbit.
But everything else about that paragraph is correct, it's just that, that statement that it's at the corner of New Rock Creek and Fairlane Drive is incorrect.
I want to be nosy and ask if there's anything already planned for it.
That's not our concern.
There is, but I can't, I can't disclose any of that information.
I know, I'm being nosy.
I was going to say, just at this time, you're reviewing the plat, the subdivision plat, but we are at the Development Committee, working with a design professional on a site plan, so that'll come to you probably at the next meeting.
Should we make an amendment to the original statement to cover the correction to the location of the property?
I think the location is correct.
I don't think you need to do that, I don't think that's necessary, that's just some of the background information for that, it won't be in the motion.
Well, but if you leave the motion the way it's written right now, and I, and we made the motion as it's written right now, then the location of the property is incorrect. That's why I'm asking.
I thought the motion said the corner of Lakeway Place and Cedar Lane.
That is the correct, yes, that is the correct.
Yeah.
The motion was correct, it was just her date, her-
Right. I don't think the background information will be, will be part of the minutes, so I don't think you need to have a motion to amend it. You may do so if you wish.
And everything is correct on the plat, and we're, that's what we're recording.
And I understand that, but we've got wording, a plat that shows one thing, and wording that says Riley Creek Road.
No, if you look at the staff report, so it's on page 14, and I have all of the headers, the project title's correct, applicant's correct, property size is correct, zoning is correct, the location is correct, the map and parcel number is correct, but in the background summary paragraph, there's one statement where I mistakenly left in that the tract was at the corner of New Rock Creek Road and Fairlane Drive. That's what's incorrect, but everything else in the staff report is correct.
Okay, so we're approving the proposal the way it was written, and it doesn't include the background information. Okay. Yeah, we wouldn't need it, then.
All right. Any other questions from the board? With that being stated, I will go ahead and call the question. Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
All right. Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. Our next agenda is site plan, public hearing. This one is the Edwards Oil Company Site Plan. It's a site plan for the redevelopment project to demolish the existing and construct a new convenience store with gas at 600 and 612 South Jackson Street. The applicant is Mr. Jonathan Edwards. Before I go to the public hearing, is there anything you'd like to add, Ms. Moody?
I think this is an interesting project. Just wanted to add that you're familiar, this is the existing gas station at the corner of West Carroll Street and South Jackson, and they intend to replace the existing convenience with a new convenience store, and have indicated to us that they have a very strategic timeline for that. We may see the new building constructed while the existing stays open, and then within just a four-to-five week timeframe, they'll tear down the existing and open the new. So, we're excited to see this project come together. They'll also be expanding and have more fuel pumps, some that are meant to serve larger trucks, semi-tractor trailer trucks, and they're proposing to use their property that abuts the city alleyway and improve it to widen the alleyway and make it, for better traffic for semi-trucks.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. I'm going to open the public hearing. If you're going to donate your time, if you would, state that at the beginning. If not, we will open it up, and in two minutes, say your name and your address. So, will I have anybody donating any time to speak to this? All right. Anybody that would like to make a comment during the public hearing section?
This is Kenny Sadler at 4866 Woodbury Highway, Manchester, and I'm the design engineer for the project, and would be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll entertain a motion to begin discussion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. I think that was, Mr. Crabtree was the first, was it you, Alderman Blackwell that seconded?
Sir.
All right. Thank you. All right, it is open for discussion. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Sadler?
Can I ask, so I'm trying to get gauge, I'm looking at the site plan, is the new building going to be bigger?
The, yeah, the new building is right at 4,800 square feet. It is a little bigger than the previous building, I think it was more in the 3,200 feet, 3,000 feet, so, and the configuration of the building is spread out more so that they have better visibility and can accommodate more, so it's kind of a different style. The existing building they have now is a corner unit, a corner entry, if you will, so this is going to be more like a retail presence.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Sadler?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I have a question. Will they be adding any fuel storage tanks?
There will be, the existing tanks will stay that they have now, but they will be adding fuel tanks for the diesel at the rear of the property. Where the diesel fuel is for the trucks, they will be adding some more tanks for that.
It's kind of a gateway to our city, so it's, it would be nice to have something new there.
Incredibly busy corner.
Yes. Probably be where people stop to get gas on the way to Jack Daniels, and so, it'd be nice to have that nice and shiny and new.
All right. Anybody else have any other comments, questions? If not, I will go ahead and call the questions, and Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer? Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwerer?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. All right. Let's move to the next one. We have another convenience store site plan. This will be the Dameron's Convenience Gas Station Site Plan. This is a site plan for a new convenience store with gas at 1151 East Carroll Street at the intersection of Roosevelt. Our applicant is Mr. Jeff Dameron. So, Ms. Moody?
Yes, this is another convenience store with gas pumps. We're anticipating that this project will be quite an improvement for that area. You may or may not be familiar now that the Dameron's own a convenience store with, I think only two gas pumps at the location immediately across Roosevelt from this property, and they propose to relocate that business and be able to expand with more pumps at this new location. We, I know that they do have an existing driveway cut along Highway 55 that they are not proposing any change to, but they are proposing improvements with extruded curb and 30-foot driveways that will be aligned between both their existing property and this new site, so we felt like that would significantly improve what's now just open access all the way from Highway 55, that entire road frontage along Roosevelt Street. The other thing I wanted to make sure, I brought your attention to about this project is, we have reviewed a site, the Planning Commission has reviewed a site plan and approved it for the site, under different ownership, and during that approval, one of the, the discussion that came about was allowing an alternative to the required sidewalks along Roosevelt and Highway 55. And so, the alternative that was approved at that time was the landscaping beds, and treating this really, as Ms. Smith said a minute ago, this is a gateway into Tallahoma, and we felt that walking along Highway 55 probably is not as desirable or as likely, but having a green, a nice green landscaped area in front of the business as you come into our city would be preferable. So I just would ask the Planning Commission, as you're reviewing this site plan and considering approval, consider giving them that same alternative to replace the required sidewalk with landscaping.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. With this public hearing, so I'm opening it up. Would anybody like to donate their time? All right. And then, would anybody like to speak on this public hearing?
This is Kenny Sadler again, and I did the engineering for this, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. All right. Anybody else? All right, I will close the public hearing, and entertain a motion.
Approve.
All right. Was that Alderman Blackwell? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right. With that, we have, oh, does your, Blackwell, does your approval include the landscaping, being able to replace the sidewalking with landscaping?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Second that, too.
All right, thank you. Need to make sure we have that on the board here. All right. Thank you all. We'll open discussion. Any questions for Mr. Sadler on this project?
I had a question. Do y'all remember when we also had that discussion, there was something about the railroad and water? And I'm trying to remember what it was. I know we were able to come to an agreement on it, but I can't remember what that was, and, and whether it was an issue with CSX, and whether they said that we could move forward or whatever. I'm trying to remember that conversation, I don't know if anybody can correct me on it.
There was some talk about drainage toward the railroad, and we needed to talk with the railroad about it, and we also brought up the concern that if- And we also brought up the concern that if we were putting some kind of impervious paving in there, that there would be, we were concerned that there might be problems with storm water flow across Highway 55 from that point. I don't know if anything's been done to kind of improve that with this new design or not, but I know, I remember that we talked about both the drainage toward the railroad and the drainage toward 55.
The landscaping instead of the sidewalk would, would help with that, I think.
It, yeah, it, it does, and this is Kenny Sadler. And the drainage was discussed and looked at. The railroad now, you know, this is existing asphalt now. Most of this area here is, is paved already. So it, it's a very insignificant increase as far as, as far as the calculations show. It's way less than one CFS, which is the, the standard for increase. So the drainage, but everything right now, the gravel area in the railroad right away is contiguous with this property, with this asphalt. And we're actually removing asphalt and, and adding in green area, which helps us. So, so the drainage on this actually would, would probably be more of an improvement than a deterrent for this development.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. All right. Other questions? All right.
Oh, hey, um, so I understand the sidewalk and the, and the, um, the landscaping kind of variance, variance isn't the word, but we will go with it. Um, there's a lot of development out here. And if we're going to put more development out here and there is homes out there, is there a concern with, I mean, there's going to be increased turning vehicles, things like that? Speed limit is probably already too high there? Is there any talk with T-Dot about that to begin with? Um, that's in the transitional period or a transitional speed limit area where it changes at 55 just, just prior to that. Um, I kind of think that, you know, this is a urban area and the sidewalks right down the way. Um, we should be improving our infrastructure for not just vehicles.
Has T-Dot already approved the entrance, the egress and egress to that? And do you have to get T-Dot's permission to do landscaping instead of the sidewalk?
Uh, no, this is, the access for T-Dot, uh, there's no change to that, that existing commercial entrance that's there, there's no change. And there's no other additional request for driveways to T-Dot.
Okay.
One of the things that I would add just from looking at this, when we did the prior site plan review under the other owner, we do have public sidewalk network on both sides of Highway 55, East Carroll Street, until you get about to the intersection with the Hands-on Science Center. And I very much support continuing, for us to continue and extend the public network all the way to the Hands-on Science Center. But on this side of the highway, I think it's much more likely that the neighborhoods will, and, and anyone that's walking, they may use Lincoln Street as their connector rather than walking along East Carroll Street. And so that was my thought in terms of the sidewalk plan and where we should invest future dollars in public sidewalk. I thought we should have more connections within the neighborhoods to the sidewalk on Lincoln Street, East Lincoln Street, rather than on East Carroll.
I, I mean, I agree, we're at a, we're at a border, but I mean, there's a lot of houses back there, especially on Roosevelt. Like, that's a, that's a, it's a, was that a urban collector? Or a tierial, maybe? I'm not sure. Um, anyway, I just wanted to voice my concern that, you know.
I feel like, I feel like if I'm walking down Highway 55, it's because my car broke down.
I mean, I've done, I've done that.
I, I hear what Ms. Moody's saying. Like, I think that having it on the other side of the street makes a lot more sense to get people to hit the Hands-on Science Center, et cetera. They may have to cross over down one block, I think Paul, from where that would be. But I think that that would honestly be safer than them trying to be on that side, you know?
I, I, my main concern is more just the general development in that area. Um, and, and really there's, I'll, I'll add that there's no, to get to the Hands-on Science Center, there's no safe place to cross probably a mile in either direction. Um, so something to consider for urban planning later.
And I would just add, we did apply for a transportation grant that would have allowed us to improve the intersection with Anderson Street. And that's where I would imagine there being a, a four-way, you know, all-direction improvements at that intersection, improvements to the signals, pedestrian signals, nice pedestrian crossings. And that would be the intersection where they would choose hopefully which side of the East Carroll they need to be on.
But expecting someone that lives, say, on Deckard, East Deckard Street to walk down to Anderson Street and then back up to the Hands-on Science Center is a little bit much to cross safely. They're not going to do that. Anyway.
Yeah, I really do not see pedestrians walking along Highway 55 now or attempting to cross Highway 55. I think people, you do mostly get in their car because same, it's a similar issue that we have with Wagner Park. And why we're building Silver Street Park is because we didn't find many people crossing that barrier, you know? The highway really creates a barrier there. Um, and we just don't see them crossing that to get to recreational opportunity.
All right, I'll, I'll be quiet after this, but there's a reason why you don't see anybody crossing there is because it's not a safe place to cross. We don't build bridges, let's just, it's, it's, we don't build bridges based on people swimming across the river. Um, you know? Um, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Chairman, Mayor Nois. Mr. Chairman, I have taken a look at that property there. It's sandwiched between the rail, sandwiched between the railroad and Highway 55. And this development absolutely maximizes the benefit of that land. So it's optimizing the commercial development to the maximum that it could possibly be. So I commend the developer for even having the vision to put a store in like he's doing, convenience store like, and gas pumps like he's doing. He's taking some ingenuity. So I think it's an asset to the city and a nice entrance, entrance to the city.
Thank you, Mayor Nois. Any other comment? If not, I will move, call a question and Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Hmm, Ms. Schwer?
Yes.
Mayor Nois?
Yes.
And I am a yes, that is unanimous. All right. We'll move to our next one. This will be Hill's Power Pro Storage Building and Site Plan, a new site plan for a new accessory storage building with an area of about 5,850 square feet at 200 Flower Town Road. Our applicant is Mr. Nathan Hill. Um, Ms. Moody?
Uh, thank you. The applicant has an existing business that was built in 2006. And I believe has a business need that he explained to us at Development Committee. He has to keep a certain percentage of his inventory onsite and needs to provide covered storage. And so he is requesting an open storage warehouse at 5,850 square feet. Uh, he does not propose any additional paving or, or impervious surface. He's going to keep the gravel that's there and just put up basically a pole barn with a roof structure. And all of it will be at the back of his property, which is already enclosed, chain link fence secured area. I do want to share, there has been one, and you read this under my, in my staff report, there's been one complicating factor to look at, and that's the zoning of the property. Um, we've had to do quite a bit of research and look back at historical zoning maps and try to look at the building permit that was issued back in 2006. And the best I can say is that it appears the property has always been zoned R4, which as you know, R4 is our high-density residential zoning. But in terms of use, the property has never been used residential. It was agriculture, wooded lot. When Mr. Hill bought the property, he bought it understanding that it was commercial. And I can certainly understand why. It's a very common conversation that I have with citizens and that have purchased land. When this property was bought, the tax assessor had previously been assessing it at 25% as agricultural property. And when he bought it, it was reassessed as commercial and he began paying 40%, uh, you know, 40% on the assessed value of the property. So to him, everything that he knew was that this was commercial. Now, we can look back and say it's never been commercial on any of our zoning maps, but the city did issue a building permit in 2006 for a commercial building. It to me appears that the mistake was made then in 2006 and that we should bring forward a recommendation to rezone this property rightfully or make a map amendment to reflect that it should be C2. Um, but I did not feel that we should hold him up from an additional accessory structure on the property, knowing that we've treated it as a commercial property for all of these years and we haven't had any complaints that I'm aware of with the use of the property as commercial. And all of the, he, he does have residential property at the rear of his lot where he has existing trees and a, a buffer there between it and the residential lot. But all of the other property that, that fronts Flower Town Road is zoned C2.
So he's not, the use of the property isn't changing. So does he even need to rezone at this time? Because the use isn't, he's not changing the use, so.
The use is not changing, but we don't allow for expansion of non-conforming uses typically.
So does that mean we would need to rezone it today or would we not need, like, what would be the process?
So the process for rezoning, as you know, is the same as amending municipal ordinance. When you amend the zoning map, it's city code. And so there's a high transparency. We would have to have a public hearing with proper notice being given before the Planning Commission, post real estate sign on the property, have provided notice to all of the property owners within 100 feet, hold the public hearing, have you guys give it a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, then provide 15 days' notice to the public of a public hearing before the Board of Mayor and Aldermen, who then has to approve it on two separate readings. So it's a lengthy process, um, that honestly, even if we had started it at the same time as this site plan review, it would have held him up through the rest of this calendar year.
Um, I, I, I vote that we don't hold him up and, and help out all of the small businesses that we can in town. So, I mean, the use isn't changing, so I don't really have a problem with, with it at all.
Jennifer, could we use something like, uh, like, uh, PUD or something to allow him to continue using the property commercial, build his commercial thing and stuff until such time as he can bring the rezoning request before us? Could we do that?
Well, I don't think it's big enough. Is it for, don't we have a minimum for, for PUDs? Five acres.
What I was proposing is that we consider his site plan on the merits of the site plan tonight. And perhaps we make the rezoning, make sure that the rezoning is done, maybe even staff recommending the rezoning, that I bring that before you at our next meeting when I can properly notice it. And we just move to correct it as quickly as we can.
Do we need a motion to, sorry, is that?
I was going to move to approve.
Wait, we've got to, I've got to do my public hearing first.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We're fast forwarded going, all right. So I'm going to stop right here, I'm going to open it for a public hearing. Would anybody like to donate their time? All right, nobody's going to donate their time. Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing on the Hill's Power Pro Site Plan?
Hi, this is Kenny Sadler again, and I'm happy to answer any questions and, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on the zoning as far as any of that that I would know as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Anybody else? All right, with that, now I will close the public hearing and I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
And Chairman, I was going to say, I did have a call. Um, I've spoken at length with a property owner who, her name is Karen Smith and her husband Jay Smith, that live on Normandy Road and wanted to speak to this. Um, and I believe she was on the call earlier, so.
We're here now.
Okay, okay.
Could you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moody.
Um, if you'll just state your name, I'm sorry, we'll get the public hearing back open. If you'll state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Okay, uh, my name is Karen Smith and my address is, uh, 717 North Washington Street. That's where I live, but I own property on the Normandy Road that is very close to Mr. Hill, I mean, Hill's Power Pro. And my concern is, I want to know, you know, about the stormwater, changing the surface, you know, from the metal roof probably to, um, you know, or any other hard surfaces that might be put in. I want to, there's a drainage east real close that's connected between my property and his and it causes me a lot of stormwater damage on my property because of the water that I get from his existing building. And I want to be assured that, uh, you know, I want to know where the water's going to be directed from this metal roof or, you know, from this building.
Okay. All right. Um, anything else that you'd like to add, Ms. Smith?
Um, no, sir.
Well, yeah, a little bit.
What?
Uh, uh, on the property that we're talking about there, it is very much underwater when it rains. And the problem is not only Hill's Power Pro, but there's a lot of water that comes from the expansion of 41 Jackson Street right there. And it comes down right there in front of Hill's Power Pro and it cuts across under a big culvert and it comes down onto our property and it has really washed out a lot of property. We have pictures and I think my wife has a meeting with Ms. Moody. But anyway, that, that's our issue.
What was your name, sir?
My name is Jay Smith.
Jay Smith, all right, thank you, Mr. Smith. All right, do we have anybody else that'd like to speak in the public hearing? If not, now I will close it. And the motion, it was made by Ms. Blackwell and seconded by Ms. Smith. Everything still okay with that? If so, we'll move forward and open for discussion. I think, Mr. Sadler, can you speak to the stormwater drainage?
I can, uh, and I'm very much aware of Ms. Smith's problems. Uh, and I, I met with her several times and tried to help her all I could years ago, uh, over this. Uh, she is definitely correct. Uh, she's in an area that, uh, that's got a pretty big watershed that goes through that area. And, um, you know, we got into it more with. And, you know, we got into it more with TDOT than anything, because every development there, the car wash, Mr. Hill's property here, the dentist office, every property from, I think, the year 2000 in the city of Telahoma had to have stormwater detention, and it had to be met from the two-year storm through the 100-year storm, which is the most stringent that you can do. So every development there that was developed was, actually had detention. The only thing there that was not detained was the improvement that TDOT did. When they came in, they widened the road. I know Ms. Smith and I both spent no telling how many hours talking to TDOT, trying to get any information at all, working with Public Works, with the city of Telahoma. And the last, the last conversation that, that I had heard, and I'm not sure this was ever done, but the, I know TDOT had agreed and Public Works had agreed that they would restrict, they took a 12-inch pipe that used to lead to her property, and they replaced it with, I think, a 24-inch. So the last negotiations I had was trying to get TDOT and Public Works to agree to reducing the pipe back down, putting a steel plate back in front of that end wall, so that it would go back to a 12-inch instead of the 24-inch that they had changed it to. They changed that 24-inch pipe at their own request. No, no one asked for that. The city of Telahoma did not ask for that. So that was the last conversation that I had had. I know me and Ms. Smith both tried to get any data, any information from TDOT that we could, and there was just nothing, I mean, they, they just had nothing to give. So I don't know if she ever received anything else, but, but it was very difficult in trying to do that. So the first thing I would say is, and I've already asked Butch when this project came up, I asked Mr. Taylor with Public Works if that ever was put in. If the steel plate was ever put in, that would have restricted that back down to 12-inch. And he said he knew that, that that was agreed on, and he was okay with it, and everybody was okay with it, but he did not know if it was ever installed. So I don't know the answer to that either. But, but that's the first thing I would do, because if, if it wasn't installed, it needs to be installed, because that, that impacted her directly from the water from North Jackson that, that goes down in that area as well. When all those improvements were made, there was no detention for that. So all that water increase would, would be coming over into her property, but the 12-inch pipe would have put it back like it was, and that's why everyone was finally okay with doing that. With regard to Nathan's, his project, what he's doing with an open structure actually will not change the drainage, and his site is designed for a two-year through 100-year storm event. The pond is in, and the property, even with the way that it is, everything coming off that property will not increase, because the surface itself is not increasing. That water that's falling out of the sky would go onto the gravel surfaces and into the pond, or the water hitting the building and then, you know, shedding off the building and then hitting the surface and then going to the pond. There, there's no, like, if we, if we did asphalt or concrete back there, then that would change the characteristics of the drainage. But right now, it's just going to drain off the building, onto the gravel, and into the pond, like it's doing today. So there is no increase on his property, and it was two-year through 100-year storm design approved by the city. So, and, and I know Jennifer and I have talked at length with the zoning of this property. You know, I did the design for this development back in, I think, 2005 or '06, and maybe Mr. Knowles will remember this at the time as well, but he was having a difficult time being able to get a site plan approved or done because of the question with zoning. He had bought it as commercial, but, so he was going through that. I was not a part of that, that discussion, but I know I could not do a site plan. I could not submit a site plan for approval without the zoning issue being cleared up. And maybe Mr. Knowles would remember something about this at the time. I think he was actually on the commission at the time, if I'm remembering correctly, but, but I, I do remember there being an issue with zoning that kept me from submitting, and I was finally allowed to submit, and the property go on and be approved. But I do not have any information regarding the, the process or anything that was done with zoning or, or anything.
TDOT moves that they're in place, don't they, Mr. Sadler?
Yes, they do.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. Do we have any other questions or discussion amongst the board?
I move to approve the, the site plan and then go through the rezoning process, like Jennifer said, later. Just get that cleared up, but I don't, I don't have a problem with this site plan at all. Maybe we can get, we can get ahold of TDOT to fix the.
All right. Anybody else, any other discussion? With that, I will call the question. Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Comer?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwer?
Yes.
Mayor Knowles?
Uh-oh.
Who's Ray?
Uh, looks like we might have lost him. The mayor's lost.
All right. I will say motion, I'll vote yes. Motion passed six to one. Mr. Knowles may have had to duck out, or maybe we will get him.
I just need to admit it, he's coming back in now.
Okay. There's Ray. Ray, we have six approved, and your vote, please. You're muted, sir.
Okay, now I'm back with you.
All right.
If you're calling for the vote, my vote is yes.
Okay. And Mr. Knowles makes seven, that's unanimous. All right. Thank y'all. We will move to the next one. This is Demby Townhome Development Site, a site for 12-unit townhome development on 1.2 acre parcel at 520 East Moore Street. The applicant is Mr. Joe Demby. Ms. Moody?
You may remember this property. It was rezoned to R3, from R2 to R3, back in April or May of this year. And now we have a site plan submittal for a townhome development. It'll, it'll be two structures, one eight-unit, one four-unit structure. They are proposed to be two-story, and stormwater detention is proposed on the site.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. This is a public hearing, so if you're going to donate your time, just let me know at the beginning, and if not, state your name and your address. So the public hearing is open. Would anybody like to donate their time? All right, I don't see anyone. Would anybody like to speak?
This is Kenny Sadler again, and, and I'm the engineer of record for this project, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sadler. All right, any others? All right then. If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
That was Ms. Blackwell, and Ms. Smith with a second. All right. Any questions for Mr. Sadler?
Just an observation, it appears that the site is a wooded lot nestled between residential buildings as it is right now. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, there is wood line along the, the southeast area, and JP had asked us to leave the existing vegetation, all that we could in that area. And so we've got the existing tree line to remain, but also on the landscaping plan, we added, you know, some more trees and, and evergreens and things back there. So the intent was, on the R2 property, the cuthrill, I think, was the name of the property. On the R2 and the suite, and that was to, that existing vegetation was to remain, and there's no development in that, in that area proposed. And there's no development in the north section of it as well. If you'll look at that area, that's all to remain. The setbacks make that. You could have put buildings in there, but it would have really been awkward and just wouldn't have been a good situation. So Mr. Demby just said to leave it alone, and so there's nothing proposed for that area either.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All right. If not, I will go ahead and call the question. Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwer?
Yes.
Mayor Knowles?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, that is unanimous. All right. Any other new business? All right. So I guess our next meeting will be Monday, November 16th, 2020. And with that, we will adjourn the planning commission. And now we are in the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and so I'm going to call that to order. We read our statement. Due to the COVID emergence, COVID-19 emergency, the Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals will conduct an essential business by electronic means rather than required to gather in a quorum of members physically present at the same location, because it is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. This meeting is in compliance with Governor's Executive Order Number 60. It will remain in effect until 11:59 PM, October 28. So we have one item on our agenda, and first, if you will read the minutes of our September 21st meeting, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Ms. Smith moved to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think Ms. Blackwell beat you in just a little bit, Mr. Crabtree. All right, I'm going to have to go through and do our voice vote. So all those are for the minutes. Ms. Blackwell?
Say that again.
I said, I just got to go through our voice. I got to ask you, do you approve?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Comer?
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Schwer?
Yes.
Alderman Knowles? I mean, excuse me, Mayor Knowles, sorry.
Yes.
And mine is a yes as well. All right. We have gone through that. Now we have one item agenda. It's variance case 212. It's a request to allow a structure to be placed in the side building setback for additional, an addition of a carport for RV storage at 1407 Country Club Drive. The applicant is Larry and Becky Shelton. With that, Ms. Moody, is there anything you'd like to add?
I would just let you know that the applicant is with us, and we spoke today, and this is a request that we frequently have to talk through homeowners with. Like many property owners in Telahoma, the driveway is built along the side property line, and their, my understanding is their desire is to build this all-metal, open carport over their RV that they store and build it right on the existing driveway, as opposed to having to extend the driveway or, or move it anywhere else on the property. And so again, I'm just, I'm interested to hear your discussion tonight and hear from the applicant.
I guess first, we would like to hear from the applicant. I saw, Ms. Shelton, I see that you're there. Would you like to speak? Oh, you're muted.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. What, what were you, you weren't going to know?
Just, you know, anything that you'd like to say before we open discussion for this variance?
Yes, we, we have an RV. Our, I'm kind of nervous. We have a RV that we have purchased, and we want to put protection over it because they are very expensive. And the way our driveway sits since our house was built, I think in the 1970s, the driveway's right on the property line, it's maybe 12 inches off from it. And the one reason why we can't put it anywhere else on our property is because our power line from the electrical pole to our house is right over in the section of our yard where we can't put the, the RV by our garage, because it hangs down too low, and it goes across the whole part of that, the backyard. And on the other side of my house, I would have to build a complete new driveway and put a, I guess, one of those gut things for drainage, because there's no sidewalks or anything from the street, and that would be just another ordeal, and that would be another neighbor I would have to deal with. So we're wanting to put it on our existing driveway that we have now. It'd just be the easiest solution. It's not visible from the street. It's, you would have to pretty much get on our driveway to see it. Don't know what else. Is there anything else I need to add, the, the size of it or anything? Do y'all need to know that, or do you have that?
I think we do have that, about 450 square feet, 15-foot high, 15 by 31. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
And our RV weighs around 11,000 pounds, so to drive it across a yard to put it in the, you know, if I decide to have to put the carport in another section of the yard, I would, I would have to put a, you know, extend the driveway, which I don't know how I could really do that because of the power lines in a way.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. As I open up discussion with our board, you may be asked a question, so.
Okay.
You'll be ready, I appreciate it. All right. I would entertain comments. I guess do we, we need to make a motion, and then we will go from there.
Yeah. Move to approve.
I have a motion for approval. Is that a second from Ms. Blackwell? All right. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Chairman Grimes? I have a question about that. Can we be sure that we provide enough findings with this approval, that staff has some direction? Because one of the things I discussed with the applicant is how. Because one of the things I discussed with the applicant is how, at a staff level, I know there are very specific criteria that you have to look at legally to approve a variant. And I had just prepared her that there is no exception in the zoning ordinance for various types of structures. We just know that the side setback is 10 feet off the property line. And that's something that, when you think about somebody building their principal residence closer than that, it sort of makes sense. You think about two-bedroom windows being that close together or something to that effect. But we have had some discussion at the staff level about all metal structures like this, it's an open carport with a metal roof on it. And we did find it questionable whether there was actually any fire hazard associated with it. I think particularly in the RV that she's intending to cover is already located on the driveway within a foot of the neighbor. And now all we're doing is adding an all metal structure to cover it in that same location. So just, I just wanted to open it up for a discussion about that because I, I anticipated that there may be some discussion about creating an exception or revising our text to allow for this because, as you know, what we, what we do for one, we should be prepared to do for others that have similar circumstance. And I would prefer not to bring a whole slew of variances to you every month, but possibly, you know, be advised on how to revise the text so that these can be approved, maybe administratively.
Jennifer, that is something else I was going to add, that, that variance, when we got the form, it was all legal term, and I don't even know if I filled it out right. It's, it was very hard to understand it. So as a resident, I wanted to bring that up, that the forms were kind of, like I said, I hoped I answered the questions right, but some of them I might not had because I didn't understand the question. It was all in legal terms, I guess.
Jennifer, so I'm looking, I'm actually, I see your, your RV on Google Earth right now. But it, in terms of the variance, I mean, it's, where she has it parked is way back from the front setback, you know, so that might be something to consider, that you, we allow the variance as long as it's, I mean, it's way, it's way back from the street. So.
Say it from the street.
Right. So maybe that's something that we could say, that if, if we allow this variance, type of variance, then it has to be X, you know, amount of feet from the front setback.
And also, isn't it an issue, it's, you know, I'm reading through reasons why you could approve something like this, and it sounds, it sounds like there's some issues with the power lines for her in terms of, of being able to, and while that's not topography and all these other things, is that something that can be somehow added to include? Because if that's an issue for it, maybe like utility issues or something like that could be added in, as an exception?
Like, because it's causing her to, she has no other choice. And she's got some beautiful trees in the frame or two, I want to see the trees go.
Yeah, see, see the power lines, they, they hang so low that my, they, my husband measured them, and they were 11 feet from the ground in my, or 12 feet, was it 12 feet? And my RV's 11 foot. So on a windy day, you know, kind of scary.
And I have to generally get on top and inspect the roof, and it's too close for me to get up there to.
Yes. And Tullahoma Utilities will not allow anything to be constructed underneath an overhead power line?
Oh, I'm glad you told me that, I didn't know that.
Is, is it, is it the power line or is it the service line to your house?
It's the service line to the transformer.
Yeah, the, the actual pole runs directly by, behind, about, I don't know, it looks like it's about 30, 40 feet behind the end of the driveway. You know, and it, the line comes from that pole, and then it.
Hooked to our house.
It's high enough where we've got the driveway now, but if you moved it over any at all, the closer it gets to the ground till it's, you know, the, the only other place we could put it would be, you know, it would, at that point would be about 11 or 12 feet off the, the power line would be 11, 12 feet. And even shorter than that, if we had to add, because we would have to put some kind of drive there because that's grass.
For, for, for future consideration, you may want, you may have wanted to consider putting that on your, on your sketch here. It's actually a pretty nice sketch, but that would have been good to see what the power line was and where, what the, what you were actually trying to avoid.
Well, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't think so, but you know, I'm, I was a narrow man, so, you know.
It's better than the other, some of the other ones I've seen in here.
It's better than I could do.
I guess that's my question is, so if, we are seeing things that are, that making this prohibited for them to put it in any other place. So what, I'm so sorry, he's screaming.
It's all right.
What are the steps to, because, you know, we are setting a precedent in the way we vote right now, what are the steps that we do to ensure that we, if we need to either update, you know, something within their exceptions wise, what do we need to do to also protect, protect our, oh no, he's on the couch, liability, if that makes sense in this, sorry, I got to get him.
But isn't part of the reason for the setback distance on houses is also because of fire issues? Because you don't want houses that are too close to each other, and you're going to park a recreational vehicle that's probably going to have fuel in it, probably going to have prote, propane tanks on it, and all sorts of things that could be dangerous to your neighbors in case of a fire or something. And that's why, really why the 10-foot distance or the setback is set up is for things like that. The idea of being visible from the road or not, we allow people to, to park cars on their grass in this town, so don't give me, you can't see it from the road. If you can see it from the road or not, really doesn't matter to me. I mean, an, an RV, unless it's just a piece of junk, is a nice looking piece, and I would have no problem with that. But I would be concerned about fire dangers and other type of dangers like that that could come in from being so close to the neighbors and things like that.
Well, we're still, the house is.
The house is pretty far apart from HR.
Probably 25, 30 foot from the other house.
Yeah, it's, it's quite a ways from our neighbor's house.
I didn't measure, it must be, yeah, 20, 25 feet from that. And it sits past, it's actually going, it parks behind the last edge of their house. Like, right now, where I've got it parked, if you looked out my back door, it would be on past the edge of their house, the backside of their house.
Because your house, there, those houses are in line, and it's 20, 21 feet behind your house.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they, they've got another ruined garage back there, but the, the end of my RV is actually past the very back edge of their house, right where it is now. That's always where I park it because it's easiest to level there. I could actually drive back another six, seven, maybe eight foot, go past that. It's just not quite as level, so that's usually why I poke, you know.
The only thing, other thing I could be concerned about is what you mentioned, Jennifer, that if we make an approval of variance for something like this, and the next thing we know, we turn it around and somebody's come up with a, be it metal or whatever, garage that's open on one end and three sides are covered, and it's basically a building, or they want to put another building, we've set a precedence, and now can't, we can't really say no to somebody who wants to do something like that.
There's, there's two on our street that's already got big buildings in the back of our houses.
Quick question, so Jennifer, this, this carport's going to be open, you said? So is that considered a permanent structure, Jennifer, or is that more like a temporary structure? Because I mean, it's, the driveway, it's just, it's going over a driveway, that's the foundation, so there's no foundation, so it's, I think.
Over an asphalt driveway.
Right, so it's more of like a temporary structure? Because it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't have a foundation and, you know, it's not enclosed.
It's not enclosed, it's all open, we're adding extra anchors down into the ground to, to really secure it. And so it's going to be an open carport.
But if you're adding anchors and everything, then it really isn't a temporary structure, it's more of a permanent structure, you don't intend to let it move.
I'm doing it for a wind variance, just to safety, just to make sure it's down, and I don't want it blowing into my neighbor's house, and I don't want it blowing into my house.
I built a shed, I built a studio one time in Savannah, Georgia, that was closed, and I got a variance because my husband, my husband's not here, but we, the way we did the foundation, they considered it temporary, and so that's my experience with that. Agree with that foundation score?
Just to be honest, I was going to say that staff and I have looked at the zoning ordinance at that, that very issue. And in the definition of temporary building or structure, it does provide an open detached carport as an example of a temporary building. But then there's some, I believe there's either another section of the code that seems to make it, make it that it is required to meet the setbacks, even if it's a temporary structure. There was some question about, that's, that's where there's just some lack of clarity or some contradiction. I think to Mr. Crabtree's point, where I also thought there seemed to be a bit of a contradiction, is that if we're going to allow driveways to be built even right up to the property line, which we do, we have no prohibition against the driveway, then it seems that we're accepting the fact that there will be vehicles and even RVs parked that close to the property line. What they're doing now is putting a all-metal structure over top of that vehicle that was going to be there anyway. So I do find a hard time finding any additional fire hazard being created by this request. And that's why I say, at the staff level, we would have two concerns with, with something being built in the, in the setback. And it's typically the fire hazard concerns and fire spread and, and that kind of safety with actual structures. And then maybe the second concern would be in areas where some additional runoff or stormwater drainage needs to be looked at. But with this request, and with others that are like it, we have all kind of sat around and talked about, should we have an exemption for an all-metal, open on four sides structure that there just does not appear to be any fire hazard created or any, I don't know, any risk associated with it? It's just that there is no exemption currently included.
How would we go about working that exemption into, does that come from our level? Does that come from codes? And then we look at it and send it on up to, how would we address that?
Yeah, I think you would make a recommendation to me, or even just now verbally, if you say you're supportive of, of the idea, staff will work on a text amendment to that effect.
I, I support allowing a car, open carports on an existing driveway within the side setback. And I don't know if we need to add something in there about the distance from any, any other structures on any of the parcels, contiguous parcels, even if they're different.
If I might interject, if, if I might interject something, Ms. Smith, I think that's something maybe staff could look at. I think you can approve this, if you're so inclined, approve this application based upon the, the situation as it is on the ground now. But I think for the future, if staff's going to develop something to amend the, the regulations, we could look at things like distance from the street and distance from other structures on the property, things like that, for a general change in our regulations.
Perfect. Jennifer, can I make that request now? Did staff look into that? And then I move to approve this project?
I think honestly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, by us, if we pass this variance, we will be giving codes, hey, this is what we want to look at going forward because we feel like it's okay. Is that acceptable?
I do agree with that. I think you're communicating through approval of variances as well, yes.
Okay, all right.
I forgot to ask one other question.
Yes, sir.
Where you live isn't part of an HOA, is it?
No, I don't, we're not, I'm not in a homeowners association, no.
Okay, so, because that would have given a whole bunch of other hassles and pain that we don't want to get into.
That's one reason why I live here, I didn't want to be in a homeowners association.
Me either.
Is, is there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Or, I mean, like, you know, a broad brush with the, with, with creating some kind of thing for allowing variances. Is there any concern to the neighbors and the structure on their being so close and in violation of that setback to their property value and, and other, just general welfare?
I don't think so, I haven't, they, my Brenda, my neighbor, she hasn't said anything about it, or she even asked me if I was going to ever to put over it, so.
Well, it, it, going, not so much for you, but going forward with the, with the rest of the board, if, if we do something, you know, is there, does there need to be notification of the adjoining property and stuff like that?
That, that's what I was going to say too, is, you know, I was going to say, what does your neighbor say? Have you talked to your neighbor? So that's good to hear.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment?
Yes, sir, Mayor Noas.
And for one thing, let me, I'm quite familiar with this location, I drive by it on a regular basis. As far as the visibility from the street, I had no trouble observing the site from the street, so I make that point. As far as the power lines go, I had a situation similar to what you have, and I had to solve that problem by putting in underground utilities to my house that solved that problem. Get down to this specific variance request, these staff considerations cite five separate considerations that have to be considered to grant this variance, and needing none of them. So I tell you, it's a, it's a stretch for me. While I appreciate the fact that you have a, a nice motorhome, it'd be nice to have it covered. But if your neighbor chose to put a similar building right on the property line, you'd have two buildings right there, two feet apart. Also, in looking ahead, many driveways in the city have driveways that are side by side, right along the property line. If he's one of those neighbors built on their one foot off the property line, you'd have two buildings on their driveways side by side. So there's a lot of this that we need to consider before we grant this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noas. All right. All right, anybody else?
Just a general comment, just based on what, what in, in Ms. Moody's preliminary staff recommendations, the bullet A there, variances shall only be granted in special circumstances or circumstances where, there's an exceptional narrowness, stuff like that. And then she goes on to say that the lot is neither exceptionally narrow, steep, or otherwise. And then she goes on to say that the lot is neither exceptionally narrow, steep or otherwise, unlike other lots in the district. It's probably a hard stretch to think that, that we are, that, that there is a, um, a hardship, uh, here for this structure.
Alright, anybody else? If not, I will call the question. And I will, the motion is approve the variance. So if you're for it, yes. If you're against it, Alderman Blackwell.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Crabtree.
Yes, I think.
Mr. Schwer.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
No.
I vote Noah's, oh, I vote Noah's well, uh, Mr. Comer, I'm sorry, you disappeared on me. Mr. Comer.
No.
No. Alright, motion fails, four to three. Alright. With that on the agenda, uh, there is no other business. Uh, I will adjourn our, um, this meeting as well. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Jennifer, I'll have you on here real quick. Um, is, is staff still gonna look into this variance and then could they reapply? That if we decide, staff decides, you know, to do just only on, um, allow them on driveways, as long as there's not a driveway next to it or?
That was a question I had. I was gonna ask, if they're not gonna approve this one, if I move it to a different location in my yard and extend the driveway another acre over, do I reapply again for a permit for the driveway and a carport?
Well, I think today, the options for the applicant would be to, yes, find a way to be in compliance with the 10-foot setback and present that to us for permitting. Another would be for you to, if you have the ability to wait, our, our intent would be to draft something, bring it to the planning commission that would provide an exception for open carports with, um, conditions that we describe, right? And when that's approved, then she could submit to, you know, to build it according to that exception, as could anyone else that met the exception.
Okay, great. So I'm still requesting that we look into the variance and you still will do that and then?
I will. What, my next step will be to discuss it with the development committee that meets every Wednesday and get some recommendations from all the other departments about what we should consider, what, what would be appropriate to allow.
Okay, and maybe look into like the underground, like Ray said, putting the lines underground, possibly the power line. Like if we can't, yeah.
That, that, I mean, I'd like to say that, uh, part of that problem with that is putting it under lines and moving that, that means I have to put up a complete, a new section of asphalt to park.
Okay, okay.
You know, so I'm looking at that, that height that I said was about 10 foot. If you put it underground there, so whatever the cost of that would be and then doing the driveway as well, now I'd have to add another 10 foot. So now I've got a driveway that goes nearly all the way back to the back of the house, or it does, go almost to that pole. I've got it about 10 or 12 foot wide. Now I'm gonna have to build another one over there that's gonna be about the same width. And so now I'm gonna have a whole side of the backyard that's gonna be practically all asphalt, which I don't want. And I know probably the city doesn't want either because now you're taking away a water absorbing ground and putting asphalt there.
Um, I guess, Jennifer, I'm sorry to keep you, but it's, what's the timeline where they could check back in with the development meeting? There would that be, then, would you speak to the develop, um, the next one and then they could check back in like two months or? I think I lost everybody. I'm so sorry, y'all.
We have quite a bit of time before our next.
Well, that, that's the thing.
The internet was backing you a little bit.
But we have quite a bit of time. Our next board meeting is November 14th, our planning commission meeting. Am I right about that or the?
Uh, the next one is 15th.
Oh, I'm sorry, 16th, 16th, yes, right. So my thought would be to bring this before the development committee this Wednesday and get some feedback and start, you know, looking at how to draft some language for the November, November 16th planning commission.
Okay. I hope that helped. Sorry.
Well, I, I.
I'm worried about what, what we talked about doing is, uh, you know, even if you did, I can understand the point of putting it underground and stuff like that. I can get that, but in order to do that and take up that much more place where water flows and just having runoff and this area back here has always been a problem with water runoffs.
Right.
It's always, that's one reason for getting the driveway in the first place. The RVs we have, of course, are so heavy that it leaves ruts. I had, I've got ruts to the back of my yard back there in the back from turning my RV around because they're so heavy.
Alright, well, I guess, I hope I helped, but just don't give up. And, and, and Jennifer, in that development meeting, they're, they're great. They're, um, but they really try really hard to, to work with people, so.
Just wanted to bring that point up. It raised, it's, it's a good thing that what he said, but, you know, we looked at that option. We thought it was a, a lot more expensive that way. And, and like I said, putting in too much asphalt.
Okay.
We like our yard the way it is.
I'll, I'll call Jennifer and find out what's, what fees and steps and paperwork I need to fill out next.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I hope I helped. So thanks, thanks, y'all. Okay, alright.
Well, adjourned.
Adjourned.